Recording in progress.
Chair Williams, we are ready to begin.
Okay, great. Can you hear me? Welcome to the regular meeting this Tuesday evening, June 28th, 2020. I now will call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ashley, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Williams.
Present.
Vice Chair Nutter is absent. Commissioner Nugent?
Present.
Commissioner Patel?
Present.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Present.
Thank you. So, good evening and welcome. We're happy to be here in person with options for virtual participation also. There are several ways to participate, and for those attending in person, there are three options to sign up to speak. Number one, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. Number two, sign in using the iPad at the back of the council chamber. Or number three, scan the QR code to sign up, and the code is located on a sign at the back of the chamber. If you're participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If you're calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Okay, so next on the agenda is public comment period. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item that is not appearing on the agenda may address the Planning Commission at this time. State law prevents the commission from actually taking action on this, on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. The target limit for public comment is 15 minutes. However, additional time for public comment may be provided and/or per speaker may be reduced to allow all members an opportunity to speak. So at this time, do we have any members of the public that would like to speak on anything not on the agenda?
Chair Williams, we do not have any public commenters.
I'm sorry, you said no?
We don't have any.
Okay. So if there's nobody that wants to speak at this time, then we can close the general public comment period and move on to the public hearing. So can you introduce the first project? Or the only project?
Yes, Chair Williams. 1701 Leslie Street Special Use Permit and Parking Variance for a New Commercial Recreation Use, PA 2021-058.
Thank you. So we will start with a staff presentation, followed by the applicant presentation, then some clarifying questions or an opportunity for any clarifying questions from the commission, and then an opportunity for any public comments. The applicant can be given up to 15 minutes to present, and members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak, depending on the number of speakers. Once the public hearing is closed, the commission will deliberate and render a decision on the project. Please note that any action of the Planning Commission can be appealed to the city council within 10 calendar days. Okay? Summer, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Chair Williams, and members of the Planning Commission. Summer Smith, Associate Planner, here to provide the presentation for item one, public hearing for 1701 Leslie Street, PA 21-058. The project before the commission this evening is a proposed commercial recreation use called Ninja, sorry, called California Ninja Academy, located at the intersection of 17th Avenue and Leslie Street. Highlight here in red. This map also illustrates the location of the Hayward Park Caltrain Station, highlighted in purple, which is adjacent to the project site to the east. The site is located in the Hayward Park Station overlay of the Transit Oriented Development Rail Corridor Plan. The general plan land use designation and zoning district are both Transit Oriented Development, or TOD for short. Given the site zoning, the project is subject to the regulations of the rail corridor plan. On this slide, you'll see a bird's eye view of the project site. The site is currently developed with one 26,000-square-foot commercial building and a surface parking lot with 46 stalls. The building provides two tenant spaces. The first space is currently occupied by the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, or IBEW, and the second space is where the Ninja Academy proposes to locate. The space was formerly occupied by the Kirkpatrick School of Dance. Below are several photos from the adjacent uses. Service, commercial, and wholesale/warehouse uses are to the south and west, and service, commercial, and office uses are to the north across 17th Avenue. Next, I'd like to continue with the description of the proposed business. Please note that the applicant is present this evening to provide additional details on the proposed business. In summary, Ninja Academy is a commercial recreation use that will incorporate physical fitness activities, games, obstacles on specialized equipment, and involve a variety of classes and activities to patrons of all ages. A few of the classes offered include school PE for home-school students, ninja warrior classes for youth, adult beginners, and professional competitors, and birthday parties held only on weekends. In addition to classes, Ninja Academy will also have a daily schedule of open gym periods for unstructured training. The facility will operate from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM on weekdays and from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Saturday and Sunday. The applicant does not propose any exterior changes to the existing building and site layout. Since the development is existing, the project is not subject to common public improvements such as installation of bike lanes or widening of sidewalks. Interior improvements are proposed, and will include installing two trust systems and attaching specialized equipment such as hanging rings, monkey bars, and rope swings. There will also be warped walls for parkour and floor equipment such as balance beams and angled steps. The applicant also proposes to enter into a shared parking agreement with the adjacent office use that provides the Ninja Academy with 22 of the existing 46 parking stalls on weekdays before 5:00 PM, plus an additional 20 spaces for a total of 42 on weekdays after 5:00 PM, weekends, holidays, and any other times offices are closed. All parking spaces addressed in the shared parking agreement are required to be identified with the days and times they are available for use. Here's an outline of the upcoming slides focused on the applicable codes and policies. Staff will start by covering the general plan and zoning code, followed by the rail corridor plan, and concluding with their requested entitlements and staff recommendation. As stated previously, the general plan designates the site as the Transit Oriented Development Land Use category. This land use category allows for transit-supportive, convenience-oriented uses. A goal of the general plan is to promote transit-oriented development in designated areas adjacent to Caltrain stations, such as the Hayward Park Station. The proposed project is also zoned TOD, consistent with the general plan land use designation. The purpose of the TOD zoning district is to implement the rail corridor plan, and as such, all permitted uses, development standards, and off-street parking and transportation policies for the TOD district are specified in the rail corridor plan. The intent of the rail corridor plan is to provide guidance for development within a half-mile radius of the Hillsdale and Hayward Park Caltrain Station areas. As the project site is within a half-mile of the Hayward Park Caltrain Station, it's also included in the Hayward Park Station TOD overlay. As noted on the previous slide, the plan also provides guidance on permitted or recommended uses. However, unlike the zoning code, the rail corridor plan does not provide an explicit list of permitted or special uses for the TOD zone. Instead, it provides use categories deemed to be transit-supportive, such as multifamily housing in major employment centers, or convenience/commuter-oriented, like retail uses which carry smaller goods, cafes, dry cleaners, and specialty uses that would enhance neighborhood services, such as daycares, art stores, and other similar uses. Additionally, the rail corridor plan requires all projects within the TOD zone to submit a traffic analysis and parking study to determine the parking demand and to implement trip reduction measures to achieve an overall reduction in new vehicle trips by at least 25% corridor-wide. The entitlements requested by the applicant include a special use permit to allow a commercial recreation use to occupy an existing building in the TOD zone, and a parking variance to allow the same off-street parking facilities to satisfy required parking for the existing office use and the proposed commercial recreation use. Locating Ninja Academy at 1701 Leslie Street requires a special use permit, given that the commercial recreation uses are not explicitly designated in the rail corridor plan. However, the Planning Commission is authorized to grant a special use permit for non-designated uses in the TOD zone that are so similar to any specifically permitted use so as to be virtually identical thereto in terms of impact and land use requirements. The Hayward Park Caltrain overlay designates neighborhood and commuter-serving retail uses and services, including specialty uses that would enhance neighborhood services, as recommended land uses. While the Ninja Academy may appear to be a regional destination because of the unique nature of activities, it functions like a neighborhood and commuter-serving business. The project incorporates incentives for local residents and commuters, including a discounted neighborhood hour on weekdays for residents who live within a 10- to 15-minute walking distance to the site, proactively recruiting staff from the Hayward Park neighborhood, and marketing to commuters as a convenient way to integrate exercise before or after work. In addition, while not formally a part of the business plan, Ninja Academy could also attract a variety of visitors that patronize nearby existing shops and restaurants before or after class. As previously mentioned, a parking variance has been requested to allow the existing office use and proposed commercial recreation use to share the same off-street parking facilities to satisfy their parking requirements. The rail corridor plan specifically encourages shared parking between uses to reduce the amount of land that is designated solely to parking. That is one of the reasons that transportation analysis and parking demand studies are required for all uses in the TOD zone. To evaluate the requested parking variance, the city's transportation consultant, Kittleson &amp; Associates, prepared a traffic and parking statement memo to assess Ninja Academy's traffic impacts and parking demand. The memo found that the project will not have an impact on vehicle miles traveled, that the voluntary transportation demand management measures provided by the applicant will reduce the project's new vehicle trips by at least 25%, and it determined the maximum capacity of the facility and a parking ratio to provide flexibility if the applicant wishes to expand the use in the future. Michael Loomis with Kittleson is available via Zoom to answer any questions the commission may have regarding the memo. With that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to approve a special use permit and parking variance to allow a commercial recreation use to occupy an existing building in the TOD zone and allow shared parking facilities located at 1701 Leslie Street, and recommend a determination of categorical exemption for the project based on the findings for approval. Thank you. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any comments or questions.
Great, thank you very much. Shall we go ahead on to the applicant presentation at this time? You can go right ahead. Oh, sorry.
I got a pause signal.
I looked up, and I thought maybe someone was waiting for me. Unfortunately, not.
Yep, that's working. Okay, great. Good evening. My name is Regan Fletcher. I'm the owner of California Ninja Academy. And for the rest of this presentation, I will be referring to it by the DBA, which is Ninja Republic. I am here this evening to, excuse me, to request a special use permit to operate recreational business as well as parking variants for the location at 1701 Leslie Street. I think it's a fair question, given that there are no ninja warrior gyms anywhere nearby, to ask, why do I want to open this? And why do I want to do it at this particular building on Leslie Street with this zoning and the TOD? And it really goes back to a family vacation that we took three years ago, where we were looking for something to do, honestly, just to get out of the heat and humidity of where we were. We found a ninja gym, and an hour later, we walked out. My kids were smiling ear to ear, and I felt like I had discovered something that would, that I could use for a career change, something where I could take my 20 years of marketing other people's businesses and use that experience to market my own business, but not just any business, something that would be family-oriented and community-serving, and then I could open right here in my own community. So that was almost three years ago to the day, and here I am, having pursued this since then. If you know anything about Ninja Warrior, there's a good chance that it's probably from having seen the American Ninja Warrior TV show. The popularity of that show has led to the creation of ninja gyms all over the US and indeed, all over the world. And what really attracted me to it from the very first time that I visited one is that it's very much for kids and adults alike. It's not just for one or the other. And the more time I spent at one and the more time I started watching competitions, what I found to be really cool is that it's a totally level playing field for men and women, boys and girls. There aren't separate categories when they have competitions. It's a very level playing field that allows everyone to do a sport like this, which is really kind of unique in the sporting world. And so I think it just, it demonstrates what I've learned to be some of the core values of the ninja warrior community and is a big part of what has driven me on this quest to open my own ninja gym. So I think it's a very fair question to ask. If it's so popular, if Ninja Warrior is so popular around the country, why isn't there one here on the peninsula? The short answer is that commercial real estate for recreational use is just very challenging in Silicon Valley. As a result, there is one true ninja warrior gym over in the East Bay in Richmond, and there's a CrossFit location in San Carlos that kind of has a temporary setup for birthday parties for kids on the weekends. But the reality is that I found, as I was looking for a building, is that there are very few suitable buildings, like 6,000 to 10,000 square feet, 18-foot clear height. There are very few of those that are zoned for recreational use. And the other thing that I learned is that, for better or for worse, there seems to be a real owner bias against recreational use, which I learned the hard way a few times. So because of that, the location, the building at 1701 Leslie, is really unique in that it has all of the physical characteristics of a building that's suitable for this type of use. And the landlord, the IBEW, is very enthusiastic about the intended use. The first time that my broker took me in to see the building, after we walked out and we were out of earshot of the listing broker, he turned to me and said, "You're never going to see a better building than this." And he was right. It was, it's just perfect. So even after researching the RRC and the TOD and thinking, "Oh, man, what's this going to be like to actually operate here?" What kept me going and seeing that there is a very good fit with the objectives of TOD was that it's just such a perfect location for what I want to create. And I think in the end, that will benefit the community by having this type of business operating at this particular building. So before I address a couple of the items that are specific to the TOD and RRC, I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on what Summer was saying about what you can expect to see in a business like this at this particular building. Every true ninja warrior gym is kind of centered around a trust system, a rig made of aluminum or steel truss from which different and interchangeable obstacles are hung so that they can be changed daily or weekly. And when people come back, they see a new course. And so some of those obstacles are listed up in the top-left corner. And honestly, if you're not, if you're not into the ninja warrior sport itself, some of those things are just, you, what's a flying squirrel? They're not very indicative from the names. So what I would encourage you to picture is Safari Run here in San Mateo or the play structure at Coyote Point. Imagine those play structures, and then imagine them on steroids. And that's what ninja warrior really is. So the day-to-day is going to be broken up into 50-minute sessions during weekdays. And those sessions will be open gym sessions. There'll be classes. There'll be a special hour for local Hayward Park residents. And then on weekends, there'll be hour-and-45-minute slots. And those time periods were done, we came up with those after the, in conjunction with the parking study. And so it doesn't show the 50-minute slot on this slide because I couldn't fit in, for example, 4:00 PM to 4:50. But each one of those sessions that starts on the hour during the week ends at the 50-minute session. And that 10-minute gap was built in to alleviate too many people coming and going at exactly the same time. And then the headcount, as Summer mentioned, the capacities were also designed to facilitate easier transition from class to class, party to party, but also to fit with the shared parking plan that we are proposing. The IBEW has its regular business hours, Monday to Friday, eight to five. And so during those hours, they will have 24 dedicated spaces. And Ninja Republic will have the 20 dedicated spaces that you see marked in red. And then in the evenings and on weekends and holidays, Ninja Republic will have the 40 spaces that you see marked in green. So the idea here is simply to minimize congestion in the neighborhood and around the block of 17th and Leslie. So for example, if a birthday party on a Saturday ends at 11:45, the next party that starts at noon will be arriving after that first party has departed. So plenty of parking to, for the headcounts that we have, be it weekdays or evenings. One of the things that I did want to point out that I think is important for context is that the allocated parking spaces that I've negotiated with the IBEW are twice that of what the Kirkpatrick Dance Studio had. And then the other thing that I think is important from a parking perspective is that birthday parties will be limited to just weekends and evenings. No weekday birthday parties. Can you forward us one slide? Because this is not doing that anymore. But there will be posted signage around the parking lot indicating when people can park there for Ninja Republic and when they can't. So one of the things that I set out to do from the very beginning in pursuing this building was making it friendly to the Hayward Park residents. It certainly fits with the TOD zoning, but more importantly, it's simply good business. I really want the local residents to see Ninja Republic as something that's a part of their neighborhood. It's not just in San Mateo. It's part of their neighborhood. So the local hour, early afternoons during the week, is designed to give a discounted admission to Hayward Park residents to be able to enjoy their ninja gym. admission to Hayward Park residents to be able to enjoy their ninja gym, their local ninja gym. And then on top of that, I'm prioritizing local hiring, which again, I think is simply good business. I want employees that are reliable and, you know, don't have to catch a train from San Jose to get to work. If they're in the neighborhood, it just makes them more reliable. So, so far, I've already lined up an instructor who lives one block away from Trinta Park, and I've lined up a couple of Aragon students who will be part-time employees on the weekends.
I just wanted to let you know there's about five minutes left.
Okay, I'm, I got one minute left.
Great.
But thank you. And so the last thing that, you know, I found in my research of the TOD zoning that I think is important for how Ninja Republic fits into the local community is that its location right next to the Hayward Park train station makes it very commuter-serving. So most ninja gyms around the country are surrounded by like 200 space parking lots. They're in the suburbs, they have all the parking they could want or need. Ninja Republic is going to be more like a ninja gym in New York City, or Boston, or Chicago. Ninja gyms that are located within a block or two of a subway station or a commuter train station and rely on their proximity to those train stations for members who are commuters. And so I think that being right next to the Hayward Park train station will make Ninja Republic very easy on/off for commuters, whether they are local commuters coming home from a day of work and are about to walk home, or they're commuting from San Francisco to San Jose and it's a very convenient place for them to stop for a workout after work. And as Summer mentioned, frequent one of the local restaurants or coffee shops or grocery stores that are nearby. So that's my presentation on how I think this fits into the TOD. And I don't presume to have proactively preemptively answered all of your questions, but I'm happy to do so now.
Great, thank you very much. So at this time, we'll see if there are any clarifying questions, and I think I'll start the opposite from what I did last meeting. Commissioner Nugent, do you have any questions for the applicant or staff?
Yes, I have, I have one question through the chair. I would like to ask about signage. Will there be any signage facing the Caltrain? I have ridden the Caltrain and I know that, looking out the windows, it's, it's easy to see that building.
Yes, it is. You have a very clear view of it from the train. That is something that I'm waiting to hear back from on, from the IBEW, from the landlord. They're not against it, they're, what they're uncertain of is whether or not it's actually allowed there. But my hope is, yes, I will.
Is that something that staff could answer about signage?
Yeah, so we would have to see what is actually being proposed and, you know, further evaluate what's in the rail corridor plan, but that is certainly an option without seeing the details.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wiggins, do you have any comments, questions, I mean, at this time?
Thank you. Through the chair to the applicant. For people visiting to use the facility, do they bring a lot of equipment with them or is it, most of it's on-site?
No equipment needed to bring, everything is there, installed.
Okay, thanks. And then to staff, one question. I understand that the occupancy is capped based on the amount of off-street parking available and with the reduction factor applied for transit usage by visitors and employees. But that being said, is there, there's not monitoring of the actual parking usage planned, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks. That is all my questions.
Commissioner Patel, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. My first question is for staff and it's about the traffic and parking statement memo. I'm having trouble understanding the math and I was hoping you could explain it to me because, I'll just read from the staff report, it says that with the utilization of the 22 dedicated parking spaces, the proposed facility is allotted a maximum capacity of 14 occupants, inclusive of staff and patrons, in the facility per session. That makes it seem like each occupant is driving more than one car, if it's 14 occupants for 22 parking spots. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand what I'm missing there.
Through the chair, I am going to let the city's traffic consultant, Michael Loomis with Kittleson, reply to that.
Hey, good evening. Yeah, the answer to that is because of the overlap between a class that's ending and a class that's starting. So they did the 10-minute offset, which allows some, but if people are staying there, their cars are still parked in the parking lot while other people arrive. So we kind of had an overlap assumption there so that conservatively, we're not assuming everyone automatically leaves right away and arrives on the hour. So that's why the parking spaces is higher than what the capacity is. Does that answer your question?
Yes, that does. Okay, so I have one more follow-up question for staff, which is, is that maximum capacity, is that a guideline? Is that a rule? Must the applicant meet that maximum capacity?
Through the chair, the maximum capacity is definitely not a hard and fast
Okay.
rule. He can have less, and then if he would like more, he can apply the parking ratio that the parking memo provided to allow flexibility if he wanted to expand.
Thank you. I'm asking because my children attend a recreational facility in that neighborhood that I think has four parking spots and probably 100 people inside the facility at any given time, so the math just seemed a little confusing on that to me. And then this question is for the applicant. I know from the staff report, you're not required to add any bicycle infrastructure, but I was wondering if there's any bicycle racks existing?
There are none existing.
Okay.
Through the chair. One of his, or two of his transportation demand management measures are to install bicycle racks and to have a bicycle repair station on-site.
Oh, okay, so that, that will be part of
Yes.
the project. Great, thank you. At the, the other recreational facility, there's no bicycle racks and there are a few of us that fight over the one gas pipe that we all walk to. So, great, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear some bike racks will go in.
Okay, great, yeah, actually, that was my question as well. And it is in the traffic study that to provide bike racks and a bike repair station, I see, but, but I wasn't sure if there were any because I, I've been, I know the area and I hadn't, couldn't imagine, couldn't envision, couldn't visualize any, I didn't go by and look, but, so yeah, I think that would be helpful and looks like it will be required anyway, so. Let me see. I guess that was it, that was really my only question. So, all right, if there are no other questions, we can see if there's any public comments at this time. Are there any members of the public? There's clearly not here in person, so anybody online?
Chair Williams, there are no more, or there are no public commenters?
Okay, great. So at this time, we can close the public comment period and open it up to planning commission comments and deliberation before we take a vote. So I'll start with you, Commissioner Nugent.
One comment I have for this is, as a, as a business that caters to commuters, I am, I would like to see a locker room that people could change in. And it looks like there's just a single locker room and, and I'm curious how that, how that is planned. Is that, what is, what is the goal for that?
Well, in, in reality, there, there are no locker rooms. There's a men's room and a women's room. There, there, there are no locker rooms
Oh, I'm sorry.
in it as a dance studio. And the reality is that there's just, when I think of a locker room, I think of shower, bathroom lockers, and the infrastructure, the existing infrastructure just doesn't support adding that. There are two separate bathrooms for changing.
Otherwise, you know, I don't see a huge difference as far as impacts to the neighborhood from the dance studio that was there. And I do see it as an amenity that, that, you know, a lot of neighbors would appreciate. And it's, you know, it's not a park, but it is a place that children can come and play, which to me is, is really nice to have. I wish I lived a little closer, but I still am close enough, so.
Not that far away after work.
Yeah. Those were, those are my only comments.
Thanks. Okay, Commissioner Wiggins?
Thank you. Through the chair, I was just going to touch on first the special use permit and then the, the parking variance. To me, the special use permit finding comes down to whether this is a local or a regional use. And to me, it's clearly the former, it's, I think it's local. We might not have a true ninja gym nearby, but in terms of the way this would function, to me, I see studios and gyms similar to this popping up north and south of here. And so I don't think there's anything here that's going to make it function differently than similar uses that would have been contemplated under the rail corridor plan. And yeah, I don't think we have this exact use in the neighborhood, but I do think it's complementary. And also as someone who has kids in a nearby place of recreation, you know, it, to me, it makes sense. I also think it's consistent with the objectives and policies of the rail corridor plan as I read them. And then particularly with regard to the TDN measures, I'd like to say that I think they're appropriate and also very thoughtful. And so kudos to staff and the applicant for, for thinking, thinking through those and, and proposing them. I do wish we already had some of the new bike lanes installed for Palm and 17th and Leslie, just to make it even safer for people to get here, but there's more on the city side that I think we can do to encourage that. So those are all my comments on the special use permit, on the parking variance. To me, it's, it's pretty straightforward to make the finding, I think all the necessary elements are, are there. I, I was impressed with the level of detail that was in the traffic and parking memo, sort of right down to the hour. And I think the way it's been provided formually in terms of what capacity is there based on the available parking is, it's smart in that it offers, I think, flexibility for adjustments. And then lastly, given that this is within a transit-oriented area, I'm just thinking often about how we can encourage further transit usage. And though I understand that we're not contemplating any, any monitoring on such a small project, I would hope that if the applicant finds that his classes are full and yet the parking spots aren't, that we can make it easier for them to expand their capacity under the conditions of approval or through a modification. I just think, we, it shouldn't be a burdensome process ideally to, to find that it's working for people to get here without cars. And hopefully, we make that process as easy as possible in a transit-oriented area to encourage and incentivize more transit use. Those are all my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Patel?
Got it. Thank you. I don't have any comments beyond what Commissioner Nugent and Commissioner Wiggins already covered. I think this is a fantastic amenity for the neighborhood, and to me, it seems that the use is sufficiently similar to the previous use. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few comments, but generally, yeah, I think it sounds like a great project. I just wanted to kind of go through my comments to support the project. Essentially, this is a tenant improvement project and it's like, I mean, I know you still need to get a special use permit, but it was a dance, or it has been a dance studio and it will be also a similar recreational children, you know, space for kids and adults. So to me, as a TI project, it's not that different from what it is currently. No changes to the electric, to the exterior or to the electrical union space, so that's also, you know, makes it pretty straightforward. I think that we can utilize the part where, that the planning commission has the option to grant the special use permit for a non-designated use if it's similar enough to a specific use. And so this falls into that category. It's, you know, a convenience use, family use and neighborhood use. So I think that supports, supports that. In terms of the parking, I think that it seems, we've been talking about and encouraging shared and not necessarily, well, I guess, we've seen projects where the proposed parking is sort of a trade-off for public parking, maybe in the daytime, and tenant parking for residential, like downtown residential in the evening and, you know, that, or nighttime, that sort of trade-off has been encouraged. And, you know, so that's similar to what you're proposing here. So I appreciate that, I think that seems like a, a good solution. And so I don't have any issues with the parking, I think it seems like adequate parking and you're near the train and, you know, and if there's, as the report says, you know, I think that you will get lots of families or, or, families or adults biking to this location because it's certainly like really very bikable. So that all made sense to me. And then I just, in looking at the plans for the space, a couple of things just came to mind. I put my architect's hat on and this is not the place for that, you'll go to the building department for that. But, you know, I would just check your exits. I think, yes, I think I saw two exits on the plan and so, you know, but I noticed that the party rooms, you know, they might have a higher occupant load, I'm not sure. So, you know, your, your plans will have to address that. And then obviously, you'll have to check the restrooms for ADA accessibility and gender-neutral restrooms as a third option to the men's and women's. I think, I think that's a code requirement, but I'm not positive about that. But anyway, you'll get to all of that when you get to your next phase, I'm sure. So I think it sounds like a great project.
Thank you.
So at this time, can I ask for a motion to?
I would motion to approve as the resolution as drafted.
Okay, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Great, thank you. And may I take, can we take a roll call vote?
Yes. Chair Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chair Abner is absent. Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Yes.
Great, so that's order zero approved. Had to count, how many are we? So with that, we approve the project.
Perfect, thank you.
Good luck with it, we look forward to seeing it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you, okay. Moving on to reports and announcements, are there any reports and announcements to make at this time?
Yes, good evening, commissioners. Manir Sandhir, planning manager. A few quick reports, so our next meeting in July, we have one item, business items scheduled before you. It is a single-family design review and special use permit that will be coming forward, which is typically at the zoning administrator level, but this project is unique, it has significant public controversy around it, so we are bumping it up to the planning commission. Just wanted to note that we do have agendas that are full for the next month, two months, so if you do have summer plans or any conflicts with vacations, please let Mary and I know in advance so that we can, we can plan around it. I'm also looking into the California APA conference, that's being held in Anaheim this year in October. We'll reach out to you to let you know if, you know, that is something the commissioners want to attend.
What are the dates of that?
It's October 1st through the 4th or the 5th, I'm not sure of the end date.
Thank you.
We are also looking at, in terms of the general plan update, looking at some general plan subcommittee meetings that will be coming forward in August. And then on the housing element, staff has been diligently working to update the draft and we hope to send it to HCD shortly in the next week or two. On city council action, so last week, the Block 21 project went before the city council and was approved unanimously. Those are all of staff's updates, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else, I don't think there's anything else on the agenda, we can adjourn the meeting for tonight. Meeting is adjourned. That seems too short to be true.